Good evening. I'd like to call and order the regular meeting for the Planning Commission. If you could, can you call roll please?
Certainly. Good evening. Chairman Grantham.
Here.
Commissioner Bellantoni.
Present.
Commissioner Martino.
Here.
Commissioner Troutman.
Here.
Commissioner Dunderman.
Here.
Commissioner Embry.
Here.
Commissioner Gill.
Here.
And Commissioner Frida.
Here.
Thank you. Can you all rise so we can say the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We'd like to approve the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting held on October 20th, 2015. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes?
I move for approval of the minutes from the last meeting.
Second it.
Who's second in it?
I second it.
Okay.
Call roll please.
Commissioner Embry.
Aye.
Commissioner Martino.
Aye.
Chairman Grantham.
Aye.
Commissioner Bellantoni.
How can a person who wasn't at the meeting move to approve the minutes?
They were in your packet.
I understand you can read them, but you can't verify their contents based on what was here?
That seems reasonable without, you know, the legal attorney.
You don't have anything to compare them against.
But I would suggest perhaps we, I don't know how.
Someone who is present needs to make the motion.
Yeah, it would, it would make sense.
Make a motion that the minutes be approved.
Can I second?
Yes, can you call roll please?
Commissioner Gill.
Aye.
Commissioner Martino.
Aye.
Chairman Grantham.
Aye.
Commissioner Bellantoni.
Aye.
Commissioner Troutman.
Aye.
Commissioner Dunderman.
Aye.
Commissioner Embry.
Aye.
Thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing for a special review use. The provisions of the Canyon City Municipal Code, and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision and development regulations, and the comprehensive plan of the city of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of this hearing as if set forth verbatim. Can I have a call from Associate Planner, Ms. Terry? Do we have a proof of notice, please?
Yes. A written notice was mailed to all property owners within 300 feet of this property as required by law, which was 15 days before the hearing. At least 15 days.
Thank you very much. Any questions of staff?
Would you like me to do the staff report right now?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I apologize.
That's all right. This is a special review use request for an accessory dwelling unit from Andrew Stoltz Fuss at 145 South Reynolds Avenue. It's located in the R1 Low Density Residential Zone District. This is a single-family home, and the ADU will comprise about 720 square feet in the loft area of the existing garage that was built in 2012 behind the house. The two-story house is about 1,600 square feet. Vehicular access to the property is on Reynolds Avenue, and there is ample parking on this almost half-acre lot. Surrounding land uses are residential. Surrounding zoning is R1 and R2, and there is existing water and sewer service. The applicant is the owner of the property, and the ADU is planned to be used for guests. The applicant meets the requirements and the intent of Chapter 1715, the Accessory Dwelling Units. Criteria for that approval is found in Appendix A in your staff report. You can see that there were referrals to the engineer, the building official, the fire district, and the sand district. We have reviewed this request, support its approval contingent upon the conditions that are noted in the staff report. Your criteria for approval may consider development features and can impose modifications or conditions should you deem them to be necessary, and most of the ones that we generally list for you are size and location of site, internal traffic circulation, location and amount of off-street parking, fencing screening, environmental influences, and none are suggested here in this staff report for this ADU. We do however suggest the following conditions. The applicant shall comply with all requirements of Chapter 1715, accessory dwelling units of the Canyon City zoning regulations, as such regulations pertain to the ADU requested, which is a new ADU in an existing single-family. Oh, in an existing garage, excuse me. The applicant shall obtain all required building, electrical, and plumbing permits for any construction or alterations that may be necessary, and obtain a certificate of occupancy if required. The applicant shall comply with any and all requirements of the Fremont Sanitation District and the Canyon City Area Fire District. Number four, unless otherwise modified by this approval or other subsequent decision by the city council, as it may apply to this request, all material representations made by the applicant in its application submittal and/or in public hearings shall be binding upon the applicant. The applicant's failure to perform in accordance with such material representations could result in the revocation of this approval. And lastly, the approval herein granted shall extend only to the ADU plan as it is presented in this application, a new ADU in the loft area of the existing detached garage, and will terminate if the ADU has not received a certificate of occupancy within one year of the approval of this request. On October 26th, written notice was mailed to 15 property owners located within 300 feet of the property. There was one response to the notice that was in favor of the request. You will find in your packet, or in the back a couple of pages, you will have your advisory report if you wish to make a recommendation for approval. You would be starting, well, I can go through that with you if that's what you choose to And I can answer questions if you would like.
Before we do questions, can I have the applicant step forward?
Can I just ask one question just so I get myself, because I'm a visual?
Go ahead.
On this map that you brought, the aerial, Terry, north, give me a north arrow so I can get my bearings. Is the north where, is the north 145 where it has a table, where it says 145 South Reynolds? Is that the north?
Yes. Uh, wait a minute. Yes, that's north. Put that on there.
I believe East Main Street would be to the north of the property.
Correct.
That's correct.
Yeah.
East Main Street. Oh, oh, okay.
It's right near Skyline Vision. Can the applicant please step forward, state your name, and your request, please, for the board? To that mic, and please state your address as well.
I'm Andrew Stoltz Fuss. I am the property owner at 145 South Reynolds, and as Terry explained already, I'm planning, my request is to be able to add a guest quarters in the upper level of the pre-existing shop that was, that was built by the previous owners.
Are there any questions from the commission to the staff or the applicant?
Terry, was the garage built according to the appropriate setbacks at the time it was constructed?
As far as I know, it was. I did not look into the original construction of that. This was referred to the building official, and he made no comments to me to the contrary.
Secondly, what's the current use of this loft area?
Right now, it's, it's just an empty area. They had, when they had built the structure, they had intended to finish it out as an apartment in the same way that, the same thing that I want to do, but before they, before they were able to get that done, they had a job change, and he left, he moved to Pennsylvania. We purchased the house from them before they were able to do that. So when, when the building was constructed, that, using the top level as, as a living quarters was, that was thought through as part of the process when they were originally building the structure.
Right now, like storage, or it's just empty?
It's just empty.
It's just empty.
Mm-hmm. Just moved in six months ago.
Welcome.
Mr. Gill.
In reading the stuff, it said that you were going to be doing the stuff in your spare time, you know, as far as remodeling and finishing and everything. Do you feel that the one year is going to be enough time?
I do, yeah. I have some friends and different people that are, that are, have offered to help out with the process, and I do feel like a one year is adequate.
Thank you.
No other questions? Thank you, Mr. Stolffus. Is there anyone from the audience wishing to address the commission on this item? If so, please state your name and address for the record. Those in favor, go first. Those opposed, go second, please. Seeing none in favor, it looks like it's your turn.
I'm Cliff Landers, and I live next door at 149 South Reynolds. When this garage was built, they said they were going to build a garage. I didn't realize that thing was going to be twice as tall as my house, looks right into my, right into my living room window. And I, I don't mind having people up there, but I don't want permanent residents up there because it's going to hurt the value of my property as if I ever go to sell it, because they look right smack dab into my house. It's built there, it's built right there, right next to the side of my house, which right into my window, and I'm really against that. I don't care if they have people come up and visit and play like that, but I don't want permanent residents in there.
Oh, on this map again, Terry? Mm-hmm. I didn't catch this gentleman's name again.
Thank you, Cliff.
Cliff, where is this house? Where is your house on this picture?
Where do you live?
His house is below the garage area. It's, it's to the south.
But to the south, southeast?
Yes.
That big structure there to the southeast?
Yes. That's what I'm assuming. Is that, let me, hang on.
Finding out, because he says they can see right into it.
What's the distance between?
I asked him.
Yeah.
So it's, it's this, so it's this structure straight, but the garage where I see the white little box that says garage with the red arrow?
Yes, that's where the, that's where the ADU will be, upstairs. And then these folks' house is to the southeast of that, and it's the big structure to the southeast.
What's the distance between the garage and the house? What's the distance, or what would that be?
I couldn't, I couldn't say at this point.
Cliff, do you have any idea?
I can only guess.
What the distance would be between the garage to your house?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Gill.
It's my understanding that this is being constructed as a guest quarters, not as a permanent residence for any individuals. And you had said that, you know, if people are going to stay there, fine, but you don't want somebody, pardon me? Right, this is, the conditions on this indicate that it is a, a guest, a guest accommodations rather than a full-time rental unit or such.
Hang on one moment, please. Can you, ma'am, ma'am, can you step up to the microphone so that we can all hear you? Thank you. Can you please state your name?
I'm Beth Landers, and I live at 149 South Reynolds.
Thank you very much.
So as it was said, when it was originally built, it was presented as a garage, not as a garage with an apartment above. But as the owner has said, he bought it knowing it was eventually going to be an apartment up above, which was not anything that we were told. And now it's going to be an apartment up above. So you're saying, oh, it's temporary, people just guests staying there. Really?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Gill.
The, your husband made the statement that he didn't want a full-time resident there, and I was responding to that, okay? In the request here, it's not requested to be a full-time resident, and he indicated that, that if it was not a full-time resident, that it wouldn't be such a big issue. And that was what I was going off of. I'm not trying to read anything in here or anything else. I'm going exactly off of what your husband said. So I mean, if I'm unclear, I mean, I'm sure what I heard was what I'm portraying, so like I said, it's not something that, you know, that I built into that, into my, into my thinking.
Right.
So like I said, and clarify if you would, but he did make the statement that if it was a resident, a, a guest quarters, that he didn't have any problem. What he had a problem with is if it was a full-time rented-out residence. So that's.
So how part-time is part-time? And that gets to be a real question.
A guest quarters is what it, what, what he's requesting here.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
Do we have any documentation supporting what the structure was actually meant to be?
I did not look at the building permit. As I said before, this was referred to the building official, and he did not come back with any concerns. So I have to assume that it was built with a, a, a building permit. And again, I'm just saying that as an assumption. Sometimes people do build with the anticipation of doing something at a later time. I think it's pretty obvious if you see the, you can see the front of the garage, that it has windows up above. And it very well may have been, if this was built in 2012, and the ADU went into effect in 2011, it's possible that the people who were building this were thinking that that's might be something that they wanted to do later. It is, and I did go and look at it, at this structure, and upstairs it is completely open. I mean, he has started to, you know, do a few things, but he has to have a building permit for it, so it's, it's open.
So this is pretty much the first documentation we've gotten on this structure for the Planning Commission?
That's correct.
So nothing else has been brought before us, making this a residential, or saying, hey, we're just having a garage, or whatever?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Thank you very much.
We have to remember that this is zoning R1 or R2.
This is R1.
This is R1, which allows for garages and homes, single-family residences.
Right, it does.
That's an allowed use. Okay.
When I was asking about the footage between the garage and the house, is there any kind of stipulation at all on, on the footage between structures? I know there is for homes.
Yes, and that is, that's a building issue, and I could not say what that is. I would be stepping out of my bounds there. The setbacks for accessory structures are very generous. For an accessory structure, it's only one foot. Now, this is, I believe, obviously more than one foot. If I'm going off of a fence line and that kind of thing is certainly meeting the setbacks, but, and I would imagine from what I can see and my own experience, although I am not a building official, that it meets the building separation requirement.
What's the setback for the single-family dwelling?
Front, side.
Side, side yard.
Five feet. Principal building.
That's to the property line.
Yes, to the property line, that's correct. And a principal use could be 40 feet tall. Yes, it is. Not accessory, though.
Mr. Stolffus, do you want to rebuttal that?
Just to try to address your concern there, I did, when I was up there and kind of thinking through this, I, one of the things that, that it specifically asks you to address when I was filling out the paperwork to, for the application to give to Terry, was the, the privacy of neighbors and how that, how it affects that. And one thing that, that I, that I am planning to do when the spring comes around and it's warm enough, I want to plant a row of trees there, which will give, give privacy there. And high enough and thick enough that it won't be looking right into your window. And so I do, as, to, to help address that, that concern, that is, yeah, that is what I'm intending to do. And it is written on the paperwork that I gave to Terry.
That garage went in with the windows overlooking our house and overlooking our family room, we started looking about trees to put in. And of course, it has to be an evergreen, or it's only good in the summertime. And it's going to have to be so tall, and you can hardly find something unless you want to put in some big pine trees or something. But we were looking at the same thing, do some landscaping to mitigate it. And it's, I'd like to see, you know, what you got in mind, because I didn't see anything suitable for us, but for us, it's different because it's in our lawn, and we have to irrigate it, around it, and figure that out where you've got a driveway there. And of course, if you plant trees in there, there goes your driveway. And, but I, yeah, I wish you'd approached us. I didn't wish we'd have known. But, yeah, it is a problem. It was a problem from the day the garage went up.
You got to talk into the mic, ma'am. Can you talk into the mic and re-say what you just said?
I said it is a problem. We looked at it for landscaping when that garage went up. And because our problem is, anything we, you know, put in there to be tall also is wide, which then interferes with where your sprinkler system is at, all of those things. So I would like to see what it is he's going to put in that's going to block those windows because they are a long ways up.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other questions from the commission?
Could I add something? We, it seems like the windows are a big, a big problem, people looking into other people's property. Can the windows, can we ask those limits, windows to be eliminated? Would that structurally make a big difference in the building, or would that solve any problem at all? One or all the windows, and I take it, we're looking at four. Therefore, they would not be able to look over and into the property.
Cliff Landers, I, I think if the windows weren't there, that would help a bunch. But the main, the main concern is, like I said, it's not going to be a permanent, it's just going to be a guest, not, I don't really have a problem with that, as long as it's not somebody going to be there 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and run up and down there like crazy. My neighbors are, they're great people, I get along with them, and I hate to go against them on this, but that affects the property, my property value.
Yeah, it's twofold. One of them is that he is requesting for a part-time guest quarters. That's exactly what that means. Number two is, we're, have a concern about people looking over into your property, and without a window or windows, that probably can't happen. And we, I don't know if we can make that request, and we could make another request that shrubbery, if it's appropriate, be planted there, then eventually that whole side would possibly be not seen. I don't know. Been on the commission.
I don't like to cause problems. I like the neighbors to do what they want to do, and I do what I want to do, but when it affects my property value, it's, it's my problem then.
And, and you understand that the city has passed some time ago the possibility for accessory dwelling units. And so it does fit into the zoning and everything. What we're trying to do here is make it, I guess you'd say, right for all parties, and if that seems like a cure, then maybe we ought to discuss that. Understand what I'm saying? Could we request and talk to the owner about the elimination, since it's basically an open air, and there are lots of other windows here, to eliminate those windows that would be on the side, which essentially would be on the, the west, the south side of that building? There's plenty of windows here in this structure. You'd have all the front windows, you know, all the side windows and all the back windows, but this, this side here that is, seems to be offensive with the neighbors, eliminate them. Ask those to be eliminated as a requirement.
Mr. Bellantoni?
Thank you.
I think our role as Planning Commission is land use as opposed to building design. And it sounds to me like these neighbors both want to be good neighbors, and they need to work it out. It sounds like they're both talking, and they're both shaking their heads right now also. So I think that they will work it out because they want to be good neighbors, and they're going to be there a while. I don't believe it's our responsibility to tell them what their structure is. That's the fire department, Greg Hutchison, that, that's those folk that are going to help oversee this improvement. Ours is land use and whether this ADU meets the criteria for approval.
I agree with Commissioner Bellantoni on that. I believe that's not our lane to involve ourselves in where windows should be placed in this building.
If I might, I did go back in the application, and yes, Andrew Stoltz Fuss did indicate that he was going to be planting trees. That is a material representation. We will take him at his word. That becomes basically a condition. So we will expect him to plant trees, and I'm sure his neighbors will, you know, follow through on that. And I would say that's probably as good as we will get, since that's what he indicated that he would do. And certainly could be helpful in this case.
Thank you, Terry. This time, I'd like to close the public hearing and call for a motion in a second for finding of facts.
I will, I will move, make a motion that the Canyon City Planning Commission, following consideration of the application for accessory dwelling unit at 145 South Reynolds Avenue, and considering the testimony of the applicant, city staff, and other parties present, find that the standards of criteria for the application do comply with the requirements of Chapter 1724, that the application is consistent with the purpose of zoning ordinance, and that the applicant has addressed the location and nature of the quest and the character of the surrounding property, and that the special use is compatible with surrounding land use and has not generated objectional noise. Therefore, based on these findings of fact, and after considering the developmental features, I would recommend approval of the special review use with the following modifications and/or conditions as listed. Do I have to read those, Terry?
No.
Can I read, can I do it by reference?
I did it.
The only thing, yes, okay, it was Terry read them with the one correction in that under condition number one, it is a new ADU in an existing garage.
Thank you.
I second that.
Any discussion? Nice, can you call roll, please?
Commissioner Bellantoni?
Aye.
Commissioner Embry?
Aye.
Commissioner Grantham?
Aye.
Commissioner Troutman? Commissioner Dunderman?
Aye.
Commissioner Martino?
Aye.
Commissioner Gill?
Aye.
I have a call for a motion in a second on the recommendation of the commission?
We, we did that all in one motion.
Well, I retract that. Are there any other business to be, come before our commission today?
I would like to state, I want to thank, this is our last meeting. I would like to state, I want to thank, this is our last meeting as we stand, with soon-to-be Councilman Gill and Honorable Mayor Troutman. And for both of you, Preston and I have been on here together. We came on together to the commission, and thank you, Preston. It's been an honor, serving with you most of the time. And then, and Commissioner Gill, I'm kidding, it's always a pleasure to serve with Preston. And Commissioner Gill, it's been a pleasure getting to know you, and I wish you well as councilperson.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I'd like to add that this has been going on six years. I've enjoyed it. And I would like to come back, however, I understand from yesterday that coming back as mayor is maybe not appropriate during certain times. But I thoroughly enjoy it. I hope that you keep up the discussions that you've had. I appreciate Mr. Renath very much. I was here from her from the beginning when we hired her, and I think that was an excellent choice. And I, again, enjoy it. I enjoy all your times, even though we didn't always agree. But that's what it's all about. We discussed it, and it got a fair hearing, so. And thanks again, and I'll hopefully be seeing you on times when I'm allowed to come see you.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Hearing no other business, the meeting is adjourned.